Welcome to the Park Commission Meeting, November 19. Casey, if you want to get us rolling with the quorum.
I can do that. Commissioner Moore.
President.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Corteor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corrigan.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
And Chair Valdez. Here. We have a quorum of six.
Great. Okay, so.
What are we going to stretch? Okay, Carrie's going to lead them, no, I have to lead them to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any, anybody online for public comments?
Um, we don't allow public comments online.
You're right.
But we don't have anyone online right now.
You're right.
Um, so there are no requests because there is no one here.
So let's get right to business. First order of business, seven minutes. Any reviews in minutes or content, highlights, concerns, anything?
We move to three minutes on November 15, 2024.
All Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Corteor.
Here.
Vice Chair Corrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chair Valdez.
Yes.
Those pass unanimously.
All right, moving to item two, the artist proposal discussion for council chambers. Uh, I saw Adrian out in the, uh. Do I, do I have the wrong agenda?
Oh, we have, no, we have Chair and Vice Chair.
Chair and Vice Chair seating room. Yeah, so Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair is item number two. You might be reading the minutes.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Isn't he under two also?
You're reading the minutes.
Those are minutes. Those are minutes.
That's all. So go back to the.
Go back to the first page, first to the.
Are you ready for a motion?
Okay, so just want to, as the staff, once she finds it, I'll go ahead and.
Then Manny.
Okay, yes, so Chair and Vice Chair election, make motions to select the 2025 Chair and Vice Chair. Um, anybody like?
The only clarification that the staff wants to make is that, um, there, if you look, I put, I actually cut and pasted, um, on the direction for commission and the Chair or Vice Chair, it should not be consecutive, um, terms. So it has to be someone different each time. That's all. Okay, you can continue.
Yeah, you had mentioned that there was some time passed where somebody was.
Somebody had recently asked me, can commissioners run consecutively? Because that's the way that we've done it, I think in Park years ago.
Park also did that.
Yeah, and so, so with that, I just want to get clarification right out of the book.
Yeah, but Commissioner Hammack doesn't allow that.
Okay, there you go.
Somewhere along the line, they changed that rule.
I guess so.
Okay, so.
I'd like to nominate Janet as Chair for next year.
All seconds.
There's no seconds, so.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, it was just Janet. Is there, are there any other nominations for Chair?
No.
Okay. Are you releasing your roll call though?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Vice Chair Corrigan.
Yes.
You know what we didn't do? We didn't ask if you were willing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you don't have to.
You can override it all.
Oh, okay.
We did have to ask if you are willing.
You can also not.
You accept the nomination.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, Vice Chair Corrigan.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Corteor.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And Chair Valdez.
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous.
All right, um, now taking, uh, suggestions for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate, um, Commissioner, um, Corteor. We were calling you just Karen.
If they should allow us.
Everybody go with that? All right.
Yeah.
Other than she's used.
Yeah, I just, I just do initials anyway, but, um, you sometimes have similar initials in this.
Yeah, we do.
Have to make sure I get the right ones. Um, okay. Uh, Chair Valdez.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chair Corrigan. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Corteor.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous.
Technical question, um, does the, um, do I relinquish the meeting to Janet?
Immediately.
As of right now? Okay. There you go.
Be careful what you ask for. Um, okay.
Did you ask?
Just kidding.
No, I say when she's, let's say then.
I think I thought you did a good job last evening helping out.
Thank you.
Well, before I, before I was gonna say this to you, but, um, but first of all, thank you everyone, but I also want to thank, um, Chair Valdez for really running nice meetings and for preserving the quorum and civil discourse, you know, throughout all the meetings. I thought it was really something precious.
Thank you.
In a time when it was not easy.
All right, so I guess we move on to the next item on the agenda, the artist proposal discussion for council chambers. Um, so we talked a lot about this. Um, Vice Chair Corteor.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but if someone else is, has any discussion.
If you have any discussion, let me go, yeah.
Do we want to make any discussion before he comes in?
Okay, yeah.
Can you hear?
No, you can't hear them all.
Oh, okay.
How the meeting, you know, opened in the public.
He could have sat in here the whole time.
Yeah.
It's all good. I think he's got pretty thick skin by now.
Thank you for.
Hello.
Thank you for your nice, uh, illustration. They really made a, they made good sense.
Chair, do you want to, um, forward with either seeing them on the screen?
Sure.
Want to start and then you can go into the.
I mean, what I, what I'm hoping we can do is be really efficient since this will be the board meeting, we're supposed to discuss this. So I hope we need everyone to study their packets.
So Adrian, just to let you know, just before you came in, we had a handing over of the new, a new chair for the next term. So Commissioner Janet Corrigan is now our Chair. And Commissioner Terry Corteor is now our Vice Chair. I am relieved of duty and our, and she was the Vice Chair and now has moved up to Chair. Great? So she'll be running from here on in.
That was good.
Thank you.
Please. Okay, one thing that I want to kind of say again is that everything I've done so far is just a concept proposal.
Right.
So we don't have the details of elements that go into every single design. That's gonna happen if one of them or all of them will be approved. And at that point, I get a counter and I start doing full-size drawings and that comes back and you look at them and you change or you do whatever you want. And then you go to the, just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, uh, this is the initial request for the writers on the stairs and the last discussion was about, um, uh, keeping the laser cut plates and do the side. And on the top have something that's like a ceramic dent, maybe things like this. Right? That's always the discussion about. I put right here, yeah, on the top, right there.
Right.
And leave the sides open with the, like, picture size, do not touch curves. That was what I remember we discussed. So that's what thing represents and. I need your approval on that.
And the, and the tiles would sit atop the concrete like that?
Will sit on top of the concrete and, uh, I can use a three-eighths of an inch previous deck. Uh, they're pretty resistant. You can even walk on them. Also, should many people do that? Maybe some kids might do that. So.
Unfortunately, skateboards won't go on that because.
No, they don't.
You've got that railing, there's no.
The railing, they're kind of protected somehow, you know, pretty resistant to, you know, the weather and all that stuff. In case you have a vandalism situation or something, it's easy to remove it and being a small piece, any architect can do it, you know, to match something if I'm not the one available, anybody can do something similar, you know, very practical.
And are you proposing that distance, it looks like about four, four inches between tiles?
Uh, I have to measure that thing exactly and see how I can fit them and then what makes visually sense. Uh, probably have three or four, not too big, not too small, no. But that's, as I said, that'll be the next step. This is just the concept.
Just go through them all first?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Uh, okay, so that's design number two that I guess was pretty much, uh, agreed upon. That is just a big mosaic above the door and then, uh, I mentioned that I can, uh, add some corte and trimmings and type of panel and connect it to the risers. And it's gonna have all these natural elements, you know, some of the images that, uh, uh, I got from, uh, from her and, um, colors would be probably kind of a muted, nothing that would be in your face, nothing really strong, all porcelain mosaic. And this is the one that we discussed about changing the, um, shapes of, uh, all those leaves and I got some, uh, images and I thought finally maybe the, the oak leaf would be the more appropriate. Then I, I still need something that allows for me to create the outline and corte and filling with, uh, mosaic and not every single leaf will allow for that. This will work okay. There is another one that's a little rounded, but I thought this one is probably more appropriate and oak is kind of the news right now. I thought, I heard on the news that it's threatened by some bugs. We're gonna lose our oaks in California. Did you hear about that?
No.
Yeah, there is a bug that, uh, it's a bug in the, uh, the, well, it's.
Oh, oh.
We found this, it's been around for a while.
So I thought that that would be, you know, there are a bunch of different type of oaks and, um, they're typical for this area.
Yeah.
So maybe we go with that shape.
So just to be clear, the, 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 um, corte is being used as the outline and there's tile in the field areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's gonna be corte, um, square to be making the frame and the tile going between.
Well, there's some issue with attaching this to the board and button?
No.
Okay.
And now we got to that debatable thing with the ramp, which, uh, last suggestion was to just have the same tiles or colorful elements on top of it, which would be something like this.
Yeah.
All along. And, uh, once again, they're pretty protected because they're behind the handrail. But, uh, somehow I got another idea, which is the next one, just to, uh, make things a little bit more complex.
I love putting it on the top instead of on the side because.
Yeah.
If you're in a wheelchair, you won't really see it on the side, but on the top you will definitely see it. That was a great idea.
Yeah. And it's, it's enough, you know, it's an accent.
Yeah.
A lot more.
It ties everything in.
Go that way if you, that would be, that's fine.
Would this just be in the area of the ramp? Or would it?
It's on the area of the ramp and on design number one, we have a, on top here, which is kind of a continuation of the ramp going sideways. But that's one idea. And then I got this idea, where I thought maybe I can use some perforated corte panels. And this is a little markup. You have the rail perforated corte and attach some, uh, porcelain tiles that would look like, something like this. Touching.
Are they attached to the corte or are they, uh, so, you know?
Yeah, they're attached to the corte. It's gonna be bolted somehow into the panel. Um, the handrail on the right will have both sides, you know, visible, you know, on the left, it's only one side.
Right.
So it can be, you know, it can be like this, but you can see it from the outside, you can see it from the inside on the right. The left doesn't need that.
So that example that you're showing has two sides?
Yeah.
So it actually has two tiles?
Yeah.
It's not one tile that is embedded in the corte?
No, no, they're two, one on this side, one on that side, yeah. And they could be different, you know, maybe in color. So I thought that might enclose a little bit the, uh, the ramp and you're not gonna see much on the side with the curves and all that.
Is that the example of the perforation size?
It could be that, uh, the moment I would try to cut this thing the real size, I would decide, is that a good one or I can get something with the gloves? It doesn't need to be the front of the, with gloves.
And it can be attached to the existing rail or you don't have to put anything in?
No, it's attached to the existing rail, yeah. Yeah, all sorts of little brackets that go around and, you know, that's not a problem.
So this cost of eight thousand, that includes the tile?
Yeah.
So the corte and the tile?
Yeah.
And the installation.
Installation, yeah.
And the scale of the tile is, is that eighteen by eighteen?
It's, it's probably it'll be a good one. I may make it sixteen by sixteen, at somewhere in that, well, not too big, not too small, you know. It's somehow protected because it's higher from the ground and it's hard to destroy unless you really get some hard object or metal bar to hit it, you know, but other than that, even if you touch it or run into it, um, can do any, any damage. They're pretty strong.
So how would you like to see the director for this? Do you have any suggestions?
I, I would think just, just calm, I mean, the questions have already been posed. I think, yeah, to be efficient, it would just be questions you can discuss.
Morris, you want to start?
No, I have, I have a couple of questions. For the railing that you're proposing there, is it something that could be, uh, where you just have the corte up higher or down lower so that there's open space? It's not a solid wall of corte with tiles? Can we do it one or the other? So there's an airflow and there's openness to it. With taking it this thickly, which I'll, you know, making it so big, you're really cutting off sort of the openness of the landscape and the style of the building. So that's why I'm asking. But I like the idea of having that as a vehicle of being able to put tiles on it. So if we did it.
What about a band?
Right, a band in the middle or a band at the top or a band at the bottom, something. Can we do it so that it's a smaller amount that will allow the display of the tile?
What do you want to show? Okay.
It has to be, you know, away from the ground for cleaning purposes.
Okay.
You need space here anyways because it's six inches to grab the leg and narrow if you like to, sure.
Okay, and then my next question about that style, that corte is, what's the edge of it like? The top edge of it or even the bottom edge of it?
It's, it's gonna be covered, yeah.
So it would be covered with something that would make it?
Yeah, it's like a U-channel type of protective. You don't get hurt.
Yes. Okay, so that was my question for, um, Mr. Littman, but then I have a question for, um, me, if I mean, on the left-hand side towards the building, if we did something like that, would that, um, disturb the landscaping that there? You'd lose the sight of the landscaping, right?
I imagine we could tell that. Then we can, we can, yeah, the final product.
What's the rule?
Landscaping.
But I know there is not much and you can see this, it's almost nothing.
Unless you. Yeah, because we'd have to talk about the height and everything. I mean, if the commission even went there, we'd have to talk about everything.
It's very little at the end, but on this area here, I see nothing and there's nothing anymore.
Okay.
So any other questions, Randy?
Chair Moore, do you want, um, if you're just doing questions right now?
I was also thinking, uh, we should just do questions and then have a discussion. Maybe everyone can go around and say what they want.
Correct.
What they think. Okay. Any, so any questions? No? Okay, so how about, sort of, our new Vice Chair?
Well, I like this new idea of design five, but I'm not sold on it. The two I'm sold on is design one and design four, because I think we can get the city council to agree to that. And if we propose design two, one, two, and four, and a council won't take it, then we go back to one and four. That's what I'm thinking. I'm worried that this is gonna be too much for them. My opinion.
So you're saying first choice, one and four?
One and four.
And then second choice?
Well, actually, first choice would be one, two, and four, but I have a feeling that council's only gonna want one and four. But I don't know, because I haven't talked to them, so, but.
I actually think that they might be more, I mean, I'm not gonna try to anticipate what they want. I, my, my feeling is that I, I actually think that the, um, design, uh, sorry, design two, the mosaic above the door is, if, I'll be honest, if they only gave us sixteen thousand dollars, I would say that's what we should do. Because, um, right now it's ugly, you know, to see this piece of whiteness next to this very organic building. Um, so I'm a big fan of design two, not, not with this particular design, but I like the color scheme, but not with that particular design. But the whole concept of decorating that part. So I'm, I'm a fan of one, two, and four as a very base design. I think the concept of three is interesting. But to me, I would want to make sure that, I used this word before, so I'll use it again. I want our, I want the chambers in the city hall, the frontage there, to feel organic, feel local, and feel dignified. So I would want less whimsy rather than more whimsy, even though I personally love whimsy. But in terms of what this is, I don't want to look like a kid place. I don't want it to look like a super contemporary place. I want it to tie into its locale. So I like the oak leaves. I would probably ask to make them smaller so that they're not so ostentatious, but the, the design, very cool. But I agree that design, the three, which is, you know, it might be an adder that could be expensive, but, um, the only one that I'm having a problem with really is the, the, um, corte.
Number five.
Um, number five. And only because, one of the things I like about, and granted, I'm not a disabled person, so we, we should probably do some outreach. What makes a disabled person that's going up the ramp feel comfortable? Does the safety on either side, which a, a barrier would provide, does that make them feel comfortable or does that make them feel blistered? I, I can't answer that question. I know for me, I like the idea of a band down the center that supports some art, the tiles. But I want clear, I want to be able to see through the wall. I want to be able to, I don't want to feel like I'm in a tunnel. But then again, that's not, that rhyme's not for me. So I would, I would defer to, uh, people that use the, um, the ramp for the function it was intended and get their input on what they, what makes them feel comfortable. So I, right now, even though I like the idea of five with a narrower band, um, I don't feel that it's imperative to the, to the budget, if you would. Um, I would also advise us and hope that we would really come up with a design that we really want to get behind and not try to anticipate their, their budgetary, you know, limits or, um, just really come, be committed to what we're presenting to them. And then if they ask us to cut back, then we know our priorities and we know what we would like to cut back. But, um, anyways, that's my opinion.
Good, so then one, two, and four.
One, two, and four, but I, but I definitely also.
Your first choice is one, two, and four.
Yeah, and then I really like three, probably smaller scale.
So then your option two would be, would be two or would it be three? I, I thought you said two initially.
My, I think my very minimal design would be, um.
One, two, and four.
One, two, and four.
One, two, four, so that's.
Right, and, but I feel strongly that we should.
Secondarily, you'd like one.
We would like to.
Two, three, and four.
To do three.
Three, so you would do?
One, two, three, and four.
Okay. And so that's option number two?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then five, I, I could live without, but again, I think there may be a functional thing that we should outreach to the community, to the same community that we just, you know, do they like that ramp? Would they benefit from having the wall there or not?
Well, the reason I don't like the ramp, just interrupting, is because if you look at the building, you're gonna have this on this side and you're gonna have nothing on that side. And I don't like that at all.
You like symmetry, symmetry?
Yeah, I'm a bit symmetry.
Yeah, I, I don't feel as obligated to that, but.
Commissioner Morris? Could you go to your one and two? Your number one choice.
Yeah.
I was trying to think as they were speaking about it. So I've never been a fan of the corte on the risers. So that's like not my thing at all. And my alternative to that last time was to put the stuff on the top and the side. So, um, one, without the corte and then running tile up the front of the face of the, um, cement wall, basically, in front.
She's talking about a different design that we do not.
No, I'm talking about right here on this one. On design one, you have designed here.
Yeah.
I think it's corte.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't love this corte, so I was just saying something here, but not here.
Number two?
Number two is just the arch wall. I like number two.
I'm having a hard time understanding.
So, so first choice, number two for sure.
Number two.
Yeah, and number four.
Number four.
Yes. And my only hesitation is on the design one, I don't love the corte on the stairs, but I like the idea of having something on the cement wall as you go up.
So you would see the.
I'm sorry, for Steph's clarification, then, are you saying that you don't like one as proposed?
Correct.
Well, the problem is we have a couple things on one and I don't want to, yeah, as proposed.
As proposed you don't like, okay, thank you.
But I like the tile idea.
So I have you down for two and four is your number one choice and then.
And one with modification.
And, and number two would be one with modifications.
No, my first choice is one, two, and four, but modifications to one.
Okay. One?
No, it's two.
That's four, but you want to modify.
So is that like a veto thing when you, when you support it?
No.
Okay.
If everybody's super attached to the, the corte on the step side.
Okay.
I'm not gonna fight that, but my very, I really, really, if we only get one thing.
Yeah.
It's the thing over the door.
I agree with that.
Just name it. What it is, two. That's two.
So number two is my, you know, if we can only have one thing, that's the one thing.
So, so I have you down, number, first choice is one, two, and four, modifying one, and then your second choice is two.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
And then, and but I wanted to also say, I really appreciate how creative we got with the ramp and that idea of putting something there. And I, I think it's an interesting idea to explore, but I wouldn't want to see it like that. But I wouldn't want to see it like that, because in a wheelchair, that feels trapped. So I would want a panel of it, or what did you, what was the origin?
A band.
A band of the Corten. So if it went as far as five, third choice, if it went as far as, as design five, that was a band, not a solid Corten.
So, thank you. I want to clarify something you said. You said when you're in a wheelchair, the, the full wall feels cramped. Are you speaking, is that what the disabled community believes?
Yeah, speak for the disabled.
Okay.
I can only speak for someone who sat in a wheelchair and pushed people in wheelchairs, and I would say that would feel very, much like a tight hallway. The other side of it is what I was saying is you're also blocking the openness of the design of the building and the landscaping, which, you know, landscaping kind of comes and goes, but you lose all of that. It's a block. It's just a wall that you see, even though it has perforations. So I, I think it really becomes an architectural change to the building, whereas the other parts are enhancements to the building.
Commissioner Corby, may I ask Director Hernandez a question? Um, Director Hernandez, I, I understand that we're all ADA compliant, but in terms of your experience, in implementing ADA compliant things, and in particular this ramp, is an open-sided ramp totally cool with the ADA community?
That's something that will have to be reviewed if this commission decides that it's worthy of review, if you choose item five.
So there's no real standard?
There, there is, there is. I couldn't, I couldn't speak to it. There's certain standards that I know off the top of my head. Something of putting this to, to close off, uh, that area, I don't think is an issue, but I would have to review it.
Okay, correct.
But I'm not going to. Not going to speak without understanding that.
Commissioner Young?
Yeah. So I actually spent a lot of time thinking about this, this is the last meeting. So I have a, I have a question for clarification. Design two, is it just, are we just looking at the mosaic above the door? Or is it, that's it, not the step thing, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Everything stays the same.
So I actually think, for me, that's the best choice. And the reason for that is, I think we want to make a statement. Okay? And that is the only design, in my opinion, that actually makes a statement of people walking up to the building. Everything else is nice, but it's very subtle. Okay? And I think that if you, if we looked at this as a statement, everything else becomes, you know, is support of that. So I think two plus one, four, you know, kind of, kind of works, you know, if you put them together. And then as far as the, give me my numbers here, number three with the oak leaves.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a little much. I, I, I think what we could do is talk to the landscape person and landscape that very, very nicely, right? So, so now if you, if you kind of envisioned the landscaping, you know, with the mosaic above the door and then the tiles, I, I'm not a real fan of the, the risers, because I think it, it's, it's not a good value for the amount of money that we're talking about here. So.
So the risers would stay as the concrete with the yellow stripes?
That's why I asked the question about number two, right? Because that doesn't include the risers.
Right, no.
Right, so.
To add design one?
Yeah. So again, my suggestion would be design two, okay, plus, not in lieu of, plus four, right? And then talk to the landscape person about landscaping, it would, would not be expensive, okay? Based upon my experience, my own experience, not expensive.
Right. And, and no option two, or any option two? Do you have an option two, like if, besides two plus four plus landscaping?
You don't have to, you don't have.
I kind of look at this, maybe I said this the last time, is there's all these different pieces, right, that we're talking about here? And you just kind of pick the ones that you want and put them together, right? And then you go from there.
Yeah.
So that's what I've done.
Yeah, okay, perfect. That's perfect.
The only other idea at this point was somebody made a comment in the last meeting about the, the concrete not being particularly attractive, which I agree. I look back, I looked at it, right? You know? So just as an idea, I think we can put, um, slate papers, right? Because I did that around my pool, right? Right on top of the concrete. And so you have slate, you know, tiles, you know, on there. Just an idea. This was suggested. It would, it would dress it up nicely and it would, I think, really good.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, that's my.
Sorry, thank you. Commissioner, okay.
First of all, I just, I want to thank you so much for your flexibility and your patience and your creativity. You're so talented. Um. I am of the belief that I think that these are very whimsical, like, um, you had mentioned. And I think they would be really well-suited for another location, like a park or somewhere where there are, like, children and, um, and I would like to, I would love to explore that with you, if you're open to it, um, for another project. Um, I personally am really partial to design number two. I think it's the most impactful, it's the most sophisticated. Um, everything else just gets kind of busy, um, and just, it, it loses its impact, in my opinion. Um, I think that it's ironic that the origin of this project was to create stair. And I think we realized it's not feasible, these stairs now just feels very forced. You know, like we're trying to make something happen and it's just not, you need a higher rise, you need more stairs to really create what we were originally envisioning, which is like a mural, you know, on multiple stairs. Um. Furthermore, I, I really don't think that city council is going to approve it because of the, um, like the, um, what's it called? Like the caution, the, the yellow, so that, you know, you hit each step. I think that that's code. I'm assuming that's.
Which one did you say is there not going to approve?
I don't think they're going to approve one that goes on the stairs. Because I think that it impacts, like the visibility.
It goes on the risers, it doesn't go.
I know, but I think it's going to impact the visibility of the, the caution, the.
The lineation between one side to the other.
Yeah. Yeah, I just feel, that's just my intuition. Um, so I'm, I'm really partial to, it's what stands out to me the most. And I, I don't really think any other design will be better suited.
Option one?
Just two.
Just two, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to add something on, on the heels of what you said about slate. What my neighbor has done with Corten. Um, they used it as a cladding. You guys all know what that is, right? A cladding.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it's gorgeous. Um, they used it on the stairs, on the lift of the stairs. They made, um, they painted a di- a different color, a highlight color, not yellow, because it's home. It doesn't have to be that bright, but you could make it yellow, but the brighter part is just solid Corten. And then the planners next to the stairs are also solid Corten, and they're on concrete. And it's, it's just gorgeous, without a design in it, just as a cladding. And then it, it's able to, um, complement the other decorations and the landscaping. Because I like the idea of the sculpture of landscaping, that's awesome. But it still up scales those ugly concrete steps. The only problem, how it's made, it's fantastic, but it's gorgeous.
But, you know, that. It's beautiful on it. Hopefully it distracts from the ugly steps. And not everyone's going to be taking steps, because you have the ramp for people who can't take stairs.
I wish you could clad, clad that facade with the concrete with.
So, uh. Commissioner, can we get, yeah, can I, can I get a summary on that one more time?
Two.
Just two. Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so we can get one more comment, and then you could, that's how you want to present this.
I, I like two, and that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. And I went through and, um, I counted, so that means that if you look at all the first choice options, number two is consistently favored by everyone. It's like six people.
It is.
And number four has four people, and again, that's coming from the number one spot. So I'm wondering, I mean, if I share.
Yeah, you can both.
What do you think?
I'm disappointed, because our goal was to have something that was cohesive. This is just one thing. It's not cohesive to me. Um, so, but I'm not going to argue, because it's not my thing. Uh, I just wish that we could all get together and do something that does the steps and the front of the building.
What do you think about the idea of just using Corten as a cladding on the steps on the side wall, so that it looks better, it looks prettier? You know, so look at that, it looks brown, you know, it stands off, so that at least if your, if your visual focus is the, the, um, the three's up top, but it's balanced by this base of beautiful rust.
I, I like this design. I don't, I, I think it's beautiful.
I agree. I'm just saying a lot of people are like, they don't like, they don't want the design on the steps. I'm like, well, then just do, just do Corten.
On this part?
On, on the risers and on the, um, the side panels.
Well, I think that's what they are doing. And then not doing this? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm, I'm saying, well, some, not everybody wants to do that. I, remember, I like one, two, and four, so I like, I like them all. I'm just trying to, I want us to, I said if we only had sixteen K, I would only do two. But I'm, I think we can get more than sixteen K. So I would like to have kind of a, a facade that looks cool, and at minimum two with the risers. Um, and maybe with the, the concrete planners on the side, if they were clad in Corten, that would upscale it big time.
Yeah, see, the only, the only issue that I see if we do something like this on the risers, that it's going to clash with the number two.
Oh, no, I'm not proposing to put tiles on the risers. I'm just saying Corten on the risers, just not with designs on them. Just.
Oh, just now, just.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm cool with that.
So here's, when I do the council, um, so what we could do, if we have three options, is we say option number one, recommendation number one is one, two, and four. Option number two is two and four. Option number three is two. And then you give, I mean, Director Hernandez, I mean, would you anticipate that what we do is we give the recommendation to the city council, and they decide what they want to do?
I have a question. How big? On the stairs.
You can see how.
An eighth of an inch. An eighth of an inch. Eighth of an inch, okay.
It's definitely just the.
A surface. I mean, you can make, you can make beautiful standalone panels out of Corten, which is a little bit thicker, but this is just cladding.
Yeah. For a moment, ask a question. Um, Commissioner Young, when you were speaking, you said the, the ramp and went like this, and so for the tile. And I was trying to understand by your gesturing, when you did that, did you mean the ramp and all of the rest of the, um, let me find the ramp.
Yeah.
Sorry. This, so you have the ramp, right, on design four, so everybody can be on the same page. And you're talking about just the part not coming around and.
You're talking about the.
Just the top of the ramp, right? Is that what you were talking about?
Well, I, I think it would be more interesting if we did this plus other, other.
That's what I thought you were saying, and that's what I'm saying too. Is that I think in order to tie the top to the bottom, you need to.
The top of the walls.
The caps of the walls.
I don't know. Have you, are you familiar with the Los Altos Hills, um, all?
Yeah.
Are, do you know that, that you remember the tile?
Yeah.
On the.
Those are, those are just camped by, by little kids or something.
All the families.
Yeah.
Mr. Littman is calling these, um, these areas, the top of the concrete handrails, and ends. So what I think, it, it, not to speak for you, is that when I saw you gesture, I thought, oh, he means all of the top of the cement and the front. And that's what I mean too, when I said modification. So for me, that would make sense, because you would have the, you would have the design that was, be right there, when you're looking at the front of the building, you'd have that front hand, cement handrail, the top of it. And you'd see the top of the doorway too. So you'd have these two pieces that tie the design together and give you more than.
So here's, here's my concern. We have been discussing this since we were the Art Commission. And so I think that we need to vote on what we have here, and if you don't like what we have here, then you should vote against it.
I agree.
And then that way, we can come back later and we can start from scratch. But I think we need to clear this out and, and give our artist direction, so he doesn't have to come back here several more times. So that's what I would propose. Let's, let's vote on what is before us today.
I agree.
And then if, if, if it goes to the city council and they, they don't like it, or they want modifications, we can take it from there. Does that sound okay? And?
Kind of, it's for design one has two design elements to it. One is the Corten on the front of the steps, and two is the tile going up. And so I'm having trouble to transfer, separating those two things. So if you look at design one, you've got the tile that I like on the cement railing. And then you have the Corten on the steps, which I don't care for. So that's why I'm having trouble with this. So I can say no to one. Yeah. You can say no. I would say no to one, but nowhere in this does it cover.
I know.
The front of the cement risers and the back. But the top of the risers in one is important to me, and I'm the one that brought it up last time. So I think we've, not even watered by something, by putting one together with two.
Can it be a continuation of design four?
Yeah. That is perfect.
Four is perfect.
Four could be the entire cement path. So, and so remove from design one, remove the tile here on the concrete wall caps and move it to design four? Is that what you're saying? That's what Jenna's suggesting. Can we expand design four?
Can you dominate, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, I'm hearing Commissioner Young say the same thing. So design four can, can you mean all along to the front, you know, the cement front?
Does that change your vote?
That's my, that gives my vote a hundred percent.
Does it change your vote? Okay, so what's your vote now?
So if we do that, we use four as the continuation, then no on one, yes on four with the modification of the entire.
Okay, so, um.
Well, we should all agree to that, that we want to reconstitute.
Right, and then the thing.
That's the thing.
Okay, so I think we need to back up a little bit, because we can't keep going back and modifying everything. We're going to be here next December, so. Um, I think we should, I think we should just vote on what's before us. I mean, Director Hernandez, any guidance?
Yeah, you, you give me an opportunity to talk. Um, I would say that as long as it's not design-related, that you can make that modification that the commissioner's making is, uh, it seems reasonable. Um, it's just she's talking about the top, that you would just move things. But as, as far as what we've asked of, uh, the artists so far, this is what's proposed. This is all we're going to vote for. So if, but now we have to talk again now, is, does the commission like four as it's modified? That's the question, because if you're talking about tying things together, doing that, does that tie together? Because that's what I'm hearing. Does that tie together item number two, which everyone's talking about tying that together? So you started with the risers, and now you've moved to just the overhead, and now you've moved to the overhead and something on the side. So I, I just, I just want to make that clear, that, uh, and, and since I have the floor at this moment, let me finish. What you should do as a commission is do not give too many options. I'm hearing option one, two, and three. The council here, here's all the information. You decide. I don't think that's going to go very well. I think that your suggestion should be, we're strongly on this, but if you would like to take the elements apart, please give us direction. That's the way I would recommend you do it.
So I would like to make a suggestion, and that is that, um, right now, in front of Mr. Littman, we, we take the tile portion out of design one, take the tile portion out, and move it to design four. So now design four is completely comprised of ramp, I mean, ramp, you know, basically concrete wall cap tiles from the ramp up to the two front rail sides.
Okay, so you're taking the tile out, but you're still having the Corten.
Yes. And so now, design one becomes singly and solely the rise, the Corten on the risers.
Yes, and so now, design one becomes singly and solely the rise, the Corten on the risers.
Yeah, I, I think that's great, it's a version of what Jenna said, which is just.
And, and take out the. So the, the rest are untouched.
It's a votes. People, it's easy.
I mean, this is part of. This stays, this, this stays.
So these. Target go.
And there's just a section in here. Okay, so you want this.
Railing and that railing are gonna go to design four, and design one's just gonna be all this.
It's reasonable, right?
Yeah, okay.
Are you okay with Corten on the front?
We have four, designs four. There'll be a continuation down the ramp and up here.
Also.
Design four, ramp.
Yeah.
Plus.
Attached to the risers.
Risers.
Yeah.
Attached to the risers.
Four, sorry, excuse me.
No, not the risers.
Attached to the top of the concrete and rail ends.
All tiles will be horizontal, with the exception of the freeze.
Okay, so what you're saying is one porcelain tile attached to the top of the concrete and rails ends.
Design one is only.
This just goes to four.
Okay.
Yeah, design one's only rising.
Only vertical, yeah, only vertical.
Porcelain tiles on the side of the concrete just go to the ramp, just goes to number four, to number four, yeah.
Notice I'm.
Okay, write that down.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, why don't you, um.
That's what the commission wants, that's what's being proposed.
Yeah.
Yes, and that way we're segregating components by type.
And so, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Catur. Is writing it up right now, so, okay, and I think that's a good compromise, so it addresses your concern and, and your.
I think, so now, if you look at it that way, design one is the stair risers or courting.
Yeah.
Design two is the freeze.
Yep.
Of the door. Design three is the wall decoration to either side of the door.
Yep.
And then design four are all the concrete wall caps vis a vis tiles.
Yeah.
As they wrap all the way to the front.
Yeah.
And then design five is the Corten, um, rail ramp panels. Okay.
The only thing. Still on one, two and four.
One, two and four. Yeah. Okay.
So, um. Can I ask for a straw poll? Of the commissioners right now. If I said, on one hand, we have risers that are Corten that are cut out with figures, the way they are, you know, shown in the design. Or we have option two, which is Corten just flat, uncut, right, facing the right, creating fascia for the risers. Just plain Cortens, just bands of rust with, you know, whatever step edge coloration that ADA would require or, or safety would require. Can I get a straw poll from each of you, which one do you prefer? Jenna, which one do you prefer, cut out or, or solid band?
Yeah, could I, could I, that's changing the design now, you're changing the design, that's not what's proposed, I would recommend that that's a separate project some other time. We are to a point where we have the design, all we changed was the structure of the setup of the design here, of what we just did, but now you're changing the design.
Can I take the straw poll?
I, I understand, but don't change anything, I don't know what you're gonna do with that straw poll here, if we can't change it, okay?
I think we, we gotta.
Something to ask later. Something.
Yeah. On the science space, and I need.
I'll finish this, yeah.
Vice Chair, um, Catur has just kind of written up what could be a motion, but maybe you can explain it, and then we'll, we can talk about it.
So I'm gonna. Motion, I, I'm gonna explain it, so, design one is gonna be the main stair, entry stairs, Corten plates. With a design attached to the risers, the price will be a little bit less. Design two is the porcelain mosaic design above the main entry door. Design four is the side ramp porcelain tile installation on the concrete curves. And the porcelain tiles installed on top of the concrete handrails at the end of the entry stairs.
Sorry, without motion.
That's my motion.
Sorry.
I was, yes, well, yes, please, I was thinking that when we continued design four, that it included the front of those cement, uh, rails.
You're getting a design space, I think.
You can't do that, you're, we've already done that design.
Right. When you look at.
You can vote now.
Wait, wait, when you look at design one, it has, uh, design on the front.
Question.
That, vertical, you take the.
No.
I think she's, she's talking about it here.
I'm talking about right here, I'm talking about this piece.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, it matches the risers.
I'd like it to match the thing above the door, cause I think you have a.
Doing the design now, we're doing that again, you can't do that, cause you're here next month.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'm not changing the design though, I beg to differ, because all I'm saying is we're continuing the design.
First choice, second choice, third choice, what is?
This is my only choice, design one, two.
We'll leave it to approve that.
Yeah, I'm moving to approve that.
But one to clarify was only the risers, that means that it does not include the little panels on the side of the stairs.
That's what we clarified, it's all the vertical.
They're not helping to sell, okay, so now we're back to having them on the.
When I suggested my change, it was to take the tile aspect of design one and move it to four, I did not change the risers. Then I wanted to do a straw poll to not change the material, but change the design on the Corten, but then that happened, so that's fine, that's fine. So those, that vertical Corten on the two end caps, it are still there.
Yeah.
Okay. I can, there is a second. What are we, what are we voting there, so we're, 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 what are we presenting? Okay, what, what is our proposal, the city council, all three of those in conjunction with each other?
Correct.
I, I, that's not what I was going, I thought you.
I, I made a motion.
That's the motion though, you don't have to vote on that.
Okay, okay, got it, okay.
Okay, so now we can have discussion, um, now you can say what you want.
Sorry, it wasn't clear to me that we were gonna present multiple designs to them and put them all together. I thought we were just gonna pick like one or two designs and say either or, I didn't know we were gonna.
Guys, there's no.
We need to present a design, and it's composed of one, two, three, four, five elements, but it's our design that we want.
Absolutely.
And then the last question, but we have to stand strong behind our design.
If we just go, I, again, if we just go with this, they're gonna say, why? What is this? What is this? Why is this here? You've spent how much time with this?
Or they'll say, great.
I don't disagree, I think there's union simplicity.
Okay.
Because a motion is on the floor, so let's vote.
I call the question.
Are we?
Okay.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Moore.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morris.
No.
Uh, Vice Chair Catur.
Yes.
Chair Corrigan.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Commissioner Valdez.
Yes.
That passes, five. Director Hernandez, what's the next step?
So I will work with the artists, uh, to verify what we have, we have it on recording, we've written it down in two places. I will put a staff report together and I will tell, come back to the commission to tell you when this is going to council, I will probably work with the chair. At our next one-on-one meeting, which I'll discuss after, we usually have a one-on-one meeting, it could be a video meeting.
Wait, are you saying we go to council with these sketches?
Yes, that's what the motion was, yes. That's what the motion was.
That's what we're deciding, Adrian, you're gonna change this though, so you're not gonna accept that.
So I need to move the top, so I'm.
Yes, sir, correct.
But, but they'll, they'll wanna see.
I'm gonna be one now.
Yeah, it's all gonna be one design.
I will, I will work with the chair, the chair to make sure that it's presented in the way.
As one design.
As, as one design.
Yeah.
With the option council will say, but I don't like this, but I don't like that, we'll have an explanation, so that's what's going to council for this one time.
I just don't think our votes reflected that decision, I think we all chose.
I mean, how many design elements are we picking to present?
That, that was unfair.
There are only gonna be one when we go to council.
Three elements to prevent the council though.
I thought we were picking like one design.
No. We broke things up into components.
It was just unclear when we were voting, because some people voted on like four things, some people voted on three things, some people voted.
Can we clarify what our vote was, please?
Uh, uh, what I, what I, what my motion was, was that we would have, one, which is. Main entry stairs, Corten plates attached to the risers, two.
Can I interrupt? So, nothing on the sides, just the risers, right?
That's.
The risers and the sides, yeah, and the vertical, risers and sides, that's only option one, that's what we said.
Okay, being presented as just one, okay.
Porcelain mosaic, design two is part of design one when we take it to council. Porcelain mosaic design above the main entry door, and then C. The side ramp porcelain tiles installation on the concrete curves and on the concrete handrails at the front entry of the stairs.
Can we please call design two a freeze, cause that's what it is? It's like F R I E Z E.
Porcelain mosaic, F R I E Z E.
Freeze.
Got it.
So we all call doors the things that flap open and close, open the door.
Yeah.
So that was my motion.
I don't, I don't have a.
If we give them more than one choice, we won't get anything.
Can you count to three and call that a.
I was hoping that we would, that what we send to council is an actual rendering.
He's reading that, okay.
Okay, but not, not with like those tiles, those tiles are very whimsical, we, we have a whole battery of organic looking tiles.
I think what I'm hearing is that we need to, are we going to be able to revisit what the design actually looks like? So when we get down to the tiles, we wanna be able to say what those tiles look like, are we gonna be allowed to do that?
It's already been set.
It's, it's, yeah.
Is that what the tiles are gonna look like?
Look like? We don't even have geckos in our city.
I will work with the chair to get.
Heard you saying you work with the chair.
I will work with the chair to get a good sample to go to council, but we're not gonna have any more redesigns or anything like that. So if this commission wants, once he does one thing, it, remember, we've been dragging this out for like six months now. And we don't even know that council's gonna even want this package.
Right.
So it would be hard for us to say, design exactly what you're gonna put together, and then council to say, no, never mind. That's why we want them to have this concept, and I wanna try to make it clear to them that this concept will be refined by this commission and by the artists, once they say yes.
To reflect things that happen in Los Altos.
So what I would recommend then is, is that, and we, we can talk about it offline, but I would recommend that. If we're not gonna have actual designs of the tiles, even sketched out, that we at least have a color board. So that they understand that we're coming up with a organic color scheme rather than.
Like something like this, right, just amalgamation.
Yeah, they'll put it all together.
So it'll be coherent and.
Yeah, and nobody, nobody.
And you have the wording that you all put together previously, when you were discussing the colors and the elements that you wanted, there was a list of those concepts, that will all go to council.
Yeah, so that was the thing that I.
We'll take, yeah, we'll take, we'll take care of this, but once again, we can't give, take the time to design exactly what's gonna go there until council says, yeah. I, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be less of an issue of the colors than it is of what's going on.
Yeah.
So, let's let council make that decision, and we will try to word the staff report as best we can, so they understand that this still needs to be completely designed.
I would like to contribute. I like, I think, okay, so I'm gonna close discussion, cause I think we voted, we need, you know, we, we need to move on, otherwise we're gonna have another long meeting, so. And my commitment to all of you is, I wanna try to run efficient meetings, so that we don't.
Um, I feel really late.
News member.
Okay, I appreciate everyone's patience, so, um, hopefully that works for you, and if it doesn't, please, I'm okay, and I welcome the feedback, but I really, really appreciate you, so, um. So, commission updates.
Thank you, Adrian, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I will contact you with the, when I tell you when the report's gonna go and everything, and, and any more work we need, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, no problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Minor standard in this business is. Our commission puts a call out, three hundred people apply, three usually are the semifinals. They get some money to come up the concert, like this, which is not a final day, it's a concert. Once the concept is accepted, the buyer gets the contract, gets into details, makeup, and goes personally in front of the council and sells the artwork.
Right.
That sense, that's what I've been through, this is the very first time I'm facing this.
Yeah.
You know, it.
Well, I mean.
I cannot do final design unless I have a contract, that's a lot of work.
You're the artist, I trust you, but I'm only one person.
No, but you're absolutely right, we are not the right people to be working with you on design, so, not at this stage.
So once I get a contract on a concert.
Then you work on it.
I'll come back with the real things, I put them down, this is it, modify, change the color, do this, whatever, cause I start to get paid. And then put it in production, that's the way it works.
I think Director Hernandez was trying to.
If I do anything around here for hours and hours and then say we don't like it, I don't get that, you know?
So I think what you're hearing is, we don't, we need to say out of design.
Yes.
No, I'm not hearing that, I'm hearing him say the design comes after his proposal with.
Right, right.
But the.
Not gonna wanna get into design, we are the ones.
Thank you, thank you, Adrian.
We appreciate you've been here so many times.
I mean, you know, I try to cooperate and do whatever, you know, satisfies, that's not a problem, you know, but. Um, we have some sort of a process that makes sense, you know, cause otherwise we'll discuss this thing for a year and never.
We're new.
Yeah.
That we're learning with you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll get information from you, I got, it's very small changes, just two boards need to be changed. Yeah. A lot of it, thank you. I mean, I need to come back for a meeting, you might just take those.
I think you need to.
Nope, once we have those.
Come on Zoom if you, if we need you, we don't need you to drive down here.
Thank you, Adrian, bye bye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Adrian, thank you.
Okay, next item, um, is, uh, last year, this commission, when it first formed, we had some updates to the, uh, uh, commission. All the commissions, and in fact, the commission handbook was updated, so there are some updates that the city, city hall gave me this, uh, report, and I've modified it for our commission. If you see any typos in there, that was because of my modifications, but, uh, but in any case, I'm gonna go ahead and take you through the slideshow. Of the updates to the, uh, to the commission, to this commission in particular, and maybe some clarification. So, this, basically, this first page, I'm not gonna read every word, but the Parks and Arts and Recreation, uh, and Cultural Commission shall, and then. We're talking about submitting annual reports, reviewing and advise on programs, activities and resources for, uh, facilities and recreation programming. And manage the public outdoor sculpture and loan program, um, I think most people know this. Um, as well as annual review of inventory of public arts, which this commission is actually in the process of doing. Um, and also serve as a forum for the community input and engagement, and perform other tasks and duties as assigned by city council. So that's, that's basic information, everyone should be aware of that. Um, election of the chair and vice chair, we just did, I think everyone's aware of the process there, and I did, uh, make sure that one of the, uh, bullet points, uh. Reminded everyone that no member of the commission may serve consecutively. Tendents and participation, uh, the majority of the members are required to be in person for meeting to take place, so, once again, as clarification, there is, um. There is a minimum for a quorum, but a quorum cannot, just another point of clarification is, there, a quorum cannot be met with a remote commissioner, okay? And I think everybody remembers that.
And when are you taking questions?
Um, oh, you can stop me, yeah, you can stop me, yeah.
So what happens when there's a commissioner who hasn't attended seventy-five percent of the regular meetings?
Um, let me see, is there, uh, that I've clarified, I don't think we put it in the, in, in this report, cause I don't think it's something that we talk about, um, in, like that. Uh, but basically, the, it is our, I found out that it's our, as the staff liaison, our duty to inform, uh, the city clerk, and the city clerk, uh, will work with the liaison. And the council to talk.
Are you gonna do that now?
It's already been done.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, good.
Alright.
Nice.
Yeah.
Worth that.
You put in individual bullet point.
Uh, reporting, uh, commissions provide the work plan for, at the first quarter of each calendar year. We are gonna, we are gonna schedule one of the two meetings in February, I just found out today.
Yeah, you have that in the agenda.
Joint meeting in February, yeah, so, uh, commissions provide an annual report to council at that meeting. Uh, Los Angeles Commission work plan, this is, uh, as you may have noticed, in the work plan that I've included in a later time, there has been some modifications to the headings, so I did some modifications, uh, to reflect as closely as possible of these, um, uh, headers that, uh, has been created for the commission work plan, so. It's, it's very similar to what we're doing. Uh, in January, we're gonna go ahead and set our commission calendar, didn't wanna do it now because I wanna find out and get a verification of the, um, uh, council meetings as well first. So hopefully we get the council meeting, uh, set at the beginning and then we'll, we'll know what those meetings are.
No meetings in December, did I see that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, for our commission, no meetings in July or December.
In the, yeah, there's an, all my, all the slides were cut off.
Oh, okay, sorry. Ad hoc subcommittees, uh, commission may appoint ad hoc subcommittees, okay, so, everyone, stay with me on this, okay? The next few slides are important, this is where the changes come in. A commission may appoint ad hoc subcommittees consisting of less than a majority of the body to work on specific tasks. Ad hoc subcommittee should be focused on one specific topic and shall not last more than a year. Basic stuff that has a change, ad hoc subcommittees must comply with all aspects of the Brown Act, I think we're all aware of that, next slide. And then, ad hoc.
Added at the top.
As they say, what's that?
Added a bullet at the top.
That's weird, yeah.
Yep.
Rather than at the bottom, I don't know why it's. Ad hoc, it can't, cannot be a standing commit, uh, commit, we know that.
The last, the third bullet.
Oh, alright, what?
Must comply with all aspects of the Brown Act, but they don't, they don't comprise a major, a majority of the, of the, uh, council, I don't know, the commission.
But you can't, with the Brown Act, you can't have, you've got the, the hub and spoke issue, you can't violate, you can't add people to it, that's a Brown Act.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, okay, that's, all aspects of that part of the Brown Act, you can't, you have to, but you're.
We could have an ad hoc committee of three.
Yes.
We can have an ad hoc committee, subcommittee of one.
Yeah.
Well, we're not there yet, so please, don't get ahead of me, don't get ahead of me. Ad hoc subcommittee is not that, uh, you must have, uh, go ahead, you can go through this.
Yeah.
This, this is, that's the same stuff, I don't know why he said it like that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so there's only, uh, one clarification, because I know it was a big question last year, is, um, the ad hoc subcommittees comprise solely of members of the commission, consisting of less than a quorum, includes and define the purpose of timeframe and accomplish that purpose, and will automatically terminate when a final report is given. Go ahead.
Right.
And will not re, okay, that one's, basically, number five. And as advisory as nature, not established to work on an item or continuing jurisdiction, exit. Alright, now.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Your bullet five, will not be reestablished or renewed in multiple years. So what if it's an ad hoc subcommittee that is covering any events that happens every year?
That, and that one, that's fine, it's not reestablished, I think that's what it says, right? Re, reestablish or renew, okay?
That it's supposed to be done every year at the end of each year.
Ad hoc subcommittees are for a specific project.
Okay, so it's okay as long as it's a specific project.
Finish the project and go.
Same project, a year after year.
And then reestablish it later on, that's, that's all, because that project should be done. Now, if it's a different aspect of that project, I, the clarification I have, is you can do that. Like if you're doing a dog park, and now you're doing a water feature at the dog park, that's different aspect.
Totally different.
Yeah, completely different, right?
But if you're doing a, an event.
Yeah.
So if we're working, let's just say we're working on, uh, a music thing, because every year we do the concert and, and we have an ad hoc, ad hoc subcommittee for that, which we don't, but just, I'm just saying. And we finish one year, but we're gonna do it again the next year. We start a new ad hoc subcommittee, it's gonna be the same.
Yeah, and that's fine, it's, but it's a different, it's a different program, right? You're talking about.
As far as that works, yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure that's.
Just leave it and work on this program and then say, okay, we're done with our report, now we're gonna go do the concert, or whatever you have, final report's done, then you have to get rid of the ad hoc subcommittee, that's what your project.
Okay, and then you start with the new ad hoc.
Do another one, yes, then you do.
You're gonna have the same people, okay?
Yeah.
It's an official end and an official start, okay?
Project, yes.
Um, bullet number one, uh, two questions. The first one, are we allowed to establish ad hoc subcommittees in conjunction with another commission? So how do we do that now? Because in the past, we would do that, we would make a committee that would have people from this commission, that commission, and that commission, and they would work on a research project or something like that, or whatever.
And I believe that's possible, but my, I, I think, uh, previous partner commission had asked me that same question. I went to the city clerk and found out, that is a no. All you have to do, it's not a, it's not an ad hoc, and it's not a subcommittee, you do a commission meeting, which means it has to be posted, you bring a whole commission, public invited, the whole thing. Once again, this ad hoc is just for a project for this commission.
Also, the history, so if the history commission wanted to do something with us, we'd have a joint commission meeting.
Yeah.
In a special meeting.
Do you get to work then, all under the guise of a series of joint meetings?
Yeah.
You couldn't establish a subcommittee anymore? You can't do that.
Ad hoc. Ad hoc, so your commission can create an ad hoc.
I understand that this is a joint project.
It's not, it's, if it's a joint project, then it's the joint commission, that's the instruction that I've been given.
I have some, okay.
Okay, so then we, so my second question is, regarding that. So you're not allowed to bring in, uh, say, an external expert into your ad hoc, ad hoc subcommittee to help your subcommittee do its work?
Why not, ad hoc committee?
Yeah, because it says solely members of the commission.
Yeah.
Well, that person wouldn't be a member.
They're not a member, yeah, they're not a member.
They'd just be talking.
You can't, where, where this comes up is, you can't have a member of the public, basically. So in other words, if three commissioners decided to, to start an ad hoc committee, ad hoc, you've been assigned by this commission to go work on that stuff, and then you add just a random member of the public, you can't do that, because now you're inviting a member of the public when that meeting should all of a sudden be posted, be open to every member of the public, it's your work together. That's also something that came up one time that I've asked about. So that, I think that's what it's talking about, your members are you own, if you have an expert in the field of whatever, science, art, whatever, that you need to, uh, to do, I would probably want to be consulted about that, I don't think that we're getting it, because I think that's more information that would probably be, wanna be shared here at the full commission.
Yeah.
But, we can work on that, but if that instance comes up, I think that's the, that's more of a discussion.
On you.
On the law, okay? I, I, I will, I will guide these ad hoc committees if you're talking about scenarios, these one-off scenarios, as they come, okay? But ad hoc committees is basically saying, just members of the commission, okay? Working pairs, okay, so let me get to that. Um, I think in the past, it's been clear that an individual, uh, commissioner can work on their own on any project without being under the regulation of the commission rules of posting and, uh, public and, uh, everything like that, as well as without, uh, the, being under the rules of the ad hoc that we just covered, right? One person can do that. This change is now saying, two commissioners can do that, and it's unlimited, right? As long as that information isn't brought to another commissioner to make three, or another commissioner isn't included, that's called working pair. So it's just, it works the same as if one person was assigned, hey, go ahead and, and do the update on the art listing that we have. So that, uh, commissioner more may be working on that, but now in a working pair, we can say, this commissioner and that commissioner, whoever wants to involve with her, there's two. That's basically, uh, summary of what we're saying here. So the council wants you a little more flexibility.
That's good, I'll drive, you take notes.
So I think that's, that's the whole, uh, idea behind this, is you can have pairs now working, so you can bounce things off of another commissioner. Same thing, you come back and report to the commission, though, but it's only two.
One or two.
Do you?
Well, one or two, yes, one is all of them.
Do you have to be working on a project, or can you be working to discuss a policy? The possible policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever.
But as long as.
If that's what's been charged by the commission.
Yeah.
Let me just get the.
Add another person in, you're good.
Yeah, you're, you're fine, but once again, the commission should say, hey, we should, do we have a working pair? That we wanna work on this, if you want an ad hoc committee, then you form one, break one down. Pair can work on that, the key there is working pairs.
Don't communicate with the other.
Yes, but the, the key in the working pairs, I think, is, it gives you more flexibility, because now you're not limited, because the ad hoc committees, if there's three of you on there, you cannot join another ad hoc committee. In working pairs, you can join multiple working pair groups. I think that's, that's the summary of, basically, there's no limit to the amount of working pairs, any commissioner can participate in them, okay? There you go, difference. One's formal, one's informal, I think you can see the rest there. So I think that's the, the idea behind the working pairs, give a little more freedom for the commissioners to work on projects or things. Commission liaisons, um, so, commissions may assign individual commissioners to act as liaisons to other boards and commissions. Uh, go ahead and keep going through this.
No, that's on the next one.
Okay. Uh, this is on here, and I left these slides on here, so just everyone's aware, if it ever comes up, but I put at the bottom, this was my bullet point, it's not applicable to park at this time, okay? The examples are given up, this is where it happens, okay? Is when you need a liaison to another group or commission, it happens in the library, because you have other connected groups in that commission, so. They have liaisons to the friends, a liaison to the endowment, and liaisons to Molly then.
Why do they, why are they, or why only they get to do that?
Because they are the only ones that need it at this point, that's what I'm saying. It, it, I'm just saying, at this, it's not applicable at this time for us. If there is some endowment group to parks and recreation, or to art later on, that we need a liaison to, it will apply to us.
Well, that makes sense, because Santa Clara County Library.
Yeah, exactly, so if there's something that we connect with a group like that regarding arts, or parks, or culture, then yeah, it would apply to us, but at this time, I just wanna make, because I think that was the question, it's like, well, what does that mean for us? Last year, doesn't mean anything right now, okay? Council liaisons, um, so, council liaisons, uh, council liaison will meet with the commission chair, uh, and staff liaison once per year, so that's what they're telling us, uh, as well as at the joint meeting, and ca- council liaisons shall not direct, guide, or undo the influence, I don't think we have that issue. I don't care, so, let's just get to the slideshow. Uh, conflict of interest, the bottom line for the conflict of interest part is, if you feel there's a conflict of interest on a recommendation that's gonna be given to the city, uh, of the city council, um, talk to me about it, that's all. Make, make yourself, make everything aware, we're talking about some kind of improvements or something, I'll talk to the city clerk, actually, I talked to the assistant city manager about this, um, and I said, hey, almost everyone in here lives near a park that we're gonna be talking about some kind of, of improvement or something at some point, um, just make, make me aware of that or make the commission aware if that subject comes up, um, and then it'll be your choice to actually continue on with that discussion and recommendation, and then I could actually, if you give me enough time and notice, then I can, uh, talk to the city attorney about that as well.
Don't we need to, um, get the distance calculation for our homes to the nearest park?
Yeah, if we.
Yes, it was, yeah, M P C, S C P A.
Yeah.
Guidance.
Yeah, and we could, we could get, uh, get guidance, so the, the standard is, I believe, five hundred, or a hun-.
Five hundred and a thousand.
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred.
Five hundred feet was for, uh, a thousand was talking about notifications, but five hundred feet, I think, is the standard. So, if you think you're within five hundred feet of any location that we're talking about, I don't wanna try to blanket everything right now because we don't know what we're gonna be talking about.
Right.
But any kind of, I can give you initial advice on, you know what, it's not an issue, because monetarily, you're not gonna win. Whatever, I can tell you, but if I think it's a little deeper than that, I could take it back, and it'll be up to you at that point, if it comes up at the meetings, to discuss. It'll be up to you to discuss, if there's a recommendation, you could abstain, you could, whatever you wanna do, or go ahead and be involved in it, but it'll be, for full recommendation, I'll need time to talk to the city attorney, if it gets to that point, so.
And, and, uh, if we wanted to get a distance calculation, so we could get, you know, authorization to participate in that kind of discussion, how long does it typically take to get a distance calculation?
Last time, actually, we may have.
Just after the very.
Because we always went through, um, what's her name? Yeah, you know, oh, Venti, Venti was always, uh, it depends. It depends, I think that we have one staff member that can get it to us in fifteen minutes.
Okay.
She's in, she's in the office, so.
So for sure, in forty-eight hours, like when we get the.
If you get the, yeah.
Notice, then we, on Thursday, then we need to let you know right away, because Friday, Saturday doesn't work.
Sure, I would recommend that, uh, but, talk to me first and say, hey Manny, I think this might be a conflict if we make a, uh, decision on this, a recommendation, then I can tell you, you know what, it's not, or if it is, then okay, give me, give me a couple days to get it. Because yeah, if you get it on Friday, you tell me right away, I'll see the email, I won't be able to talk to Venti till Monday, and if she's in that Monday, then, uh, then I'll be able to get it, if not, it may be delayed, and then it'll be up to you, or if I can talk to the city attorney, so.
We use the ad hoc conflict of interest map that was sent to each of us as commissioners on the park?
Okay.
So that we just knew right off.
And I'll, I'll see about that, I'll see about getting that, and just to see with all the addresses, and we'll have to get the address, I think we've got everyone, I think.
Cause I know, oh, and, yeah, I know, we know yours, but the.
That'll give us time to just say, okay, all of these parks, it's just, sometimes it, that map could be like, oh, five hundred feet from this park, or not this park, and everything, but we don't even know what we're talking about right now, so.
Right.
It, when those topics come up, or on the agenda of coming up, if we talk about something that we might make a decision on, when I speak to the chair on our monthly meeting, it might dawn on us, and I, maybe we'll just send an email out, say, hey, we're gonna make a decision on this, which has monetarily advantage, I'm just saying this.
I have a, a question about that, though, so I wanted to clarify, so if I'm hearing this correctly, it's not a hard-chast rule that if you live within five hundred feet of a park, that you have to recuse yourself from a discussion that has to do with that park, it's only if there's a monetary advantage.
Yeah, if there's some, some kind of.
I think it used to be, you had to recuse yourself.
No, no, this, it says it right there, and that's why I wasn't gonna have to read it. But personal relationships, financial interests, serving on bodies and boards, shared overlapping subject matter and jurisdiction of those jurisdictions of the commission. So basically, if the, if it appears that there's a commissioner's private interest impact, the official duties of the commissioner may influence your decision making. So, if, if it's a situation, I mean, I'm trying to think of a, of, of scenario where it would and would, if, if there is a recommendation to put, uh, you know what, there's a grant coming, or the grant available, and it should go into Park X, and it's right near your house, I'm probably gonna have to get that checked up on, because I don't know, I, I, I don't know what would happen in that. If there's a recommendation on an art installation that's across, at a park across from your house, I can tell you right now, that's not a big deal. That's not something that, that necessary. If you still feel uncomfortable about that, that's fine, it's just everything that you just saw on there, that's what you're, you're looking at right now.
I, I am familiar with this issue, and I think you have to be extremely careful, because it has come up in the past for park commissioners.
Yes.
Yeah, and it was a big deal.
Hot, hot subject, and it had to do with Hully House, and it had to do with the, um, what's that park, I never forget, I always forget the name of that park that's got.
Shiree.
Shiree, however you say, um, yeah, people who live by that, and there was a huge stink race about someone living just right on the edge of the five hundred.
And, and once again, you're, you can all involve yourself in the discussion and everything of something that may be a conflict, but when it comes to a recommendation that you're involved in, you might wanna recuse yourself if we don't have a definitive answer.
Okay, got it, and then I can also. Say, though, is that we can also have a conversation where if it comes up so quickly and people don't have a chance to get clearance, we could push the item, you know, potentially, depending.
And that, that's, that's something else.
Time to go get the conflict resolved, so they can participate.
Yeah, so that, that is actually another option too, if it's that serious, I mean, right now, there's nothing, I think, on our, on our agenda that, but there might be. There might be, I don't know whether, so, it'll come, so, just wanna clarify that. Yeah, for state law, public officials and commissioners, engage in activity of compensation. Uh, ultimately, the responsibility, commission member to identify whether they are to be. Uh, ultimately, the responsibility of the commission member to identify whether they are to be engaged, as I already told you. So just bring it to my thinking and I can work with you to get access to answers. Any questions? If any commissioner have questions or concerns or unclear about anything, please contact, or the council leader. I think that's it.
That is.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Fantastic report, thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Is, uh, council member Meadows still our council liaison?
So today, yes, so this is.
Okay, thank you, I thought so. Okay, thank you.
She does not.
So it's eight o'clock, um, I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, uh, the commission work plan. And, um, I think as everyone recalls, we talked about this, uh, last meeting. And, uh, Director Hernandez and Ms. Richardson have gone ahead and updated the work plan. I've reviewed it, I'm sure everyone has studied it. Are there any questions? No.
Thank you for updating it, by the way. It's really nice.
Thank you, yeah, I, I did, I did my best for formatting. Uh, what I would request is if we can, I'm sorry, this will take a little bit of time, but if we, if you could go through, I think it'll be beneficial because if this is voted on or approved here, this is the version that's going to council.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't think the assignment is necessary. But if you look at the two, uh, three columns that are essentially blank, but I think anticipated completion should be reviewed for each of these line items. Um, at least that. An assignment, we can assign that at, in the January meeting or February meeting, however you want to do it. Uh, I would recommend, uh, but anticipated completion, uh, probably should be discussed now so they know, hey, it's ongoing, it's going to be done next year or something.
Okay, so we, so you like to add in, like, completion days, can we do that by quarter?
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, however you want to, month, season, quarter, annually, ongoing, anything.
Okay, so let's start with, um, community outreach.
Ongoing.
Under pro- under project, so if we can go over the line items.
Continue search for opportunities for community involvement programs. I think that's going to be going throughout the year, so ongoing.
Right. I agree. A call for art is, what, four times a year? Do we decide or three?
I think we choose three.
Three. Was it the call for art?
Three times a year.
Well, actually, it's call for art versus, uh, is that the? Is that the, um, this building or is it the call for public art, which is art without walls?
Art without walls is down below.
Yeah, it's down further.
Exactly. I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm clarifying.
Somewhere around here, there's, it spells out, it's twice a year for the artwork out there. I don't, I read it.
Call for art, we need a call for art out here.
Yeah.
Does it include any call?
Oh, yeah, no, that's under managing community center artwork, okay.
Okay, so it has its own thing.
So this is the call for art.
This is separate from any of those.
So, and remember, it's not the call for art, it's the develop process and program for a call for art. That's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Is it done?
Yeah, I didn't scratch that off last meeting, but is that done? I mean, we have the process in cafe now.
It's in the cafe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's done.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you're just talking about the process, it's already done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it doesn't belong on this?
No, it, it must have given my prompt up. Okay, continue.
And then, uh. I, I'd like to jump back to the very first thing, continue search for opportunities for community involvement programs. What is that?
That could be like what we did, remember when, uh, the art commission partnered with you guys' park and we had, um, paint the stones at Ramp Park and we did, um, we did a paint, uh, thinking of the orchard here. I think that was just the art commission. It could be pop-up art, like what you were thinking.
Yeah, we did a couple.
So it just means, you know, doing, doing activities with the community. Cause when I read this, okay, okay.
So would it, it almost seems like it would be better wording to say, plan and execute. Opportunities for community involvement.
I would say, I would make that more concrete, um, plan and execute.
And you serve, um, community involvement programs, just leave it like that.
For opportunity.
Yes.
How about, I, I think the wordsmithing stuff, but identify opportunities for community involvement programs and develop plan proposals.
Sure, I mean, I think we should be conducting them, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, cause we can search all we want, but if we don't execute, it doesn't matter.
Search, plan, and conduct, community involvement.
Identify opportunities for community involvement.
It's going to be on the recording.
Okay, alright, we'll get it.
Search, plan, and execute, community involvement program.
Okay, that can be done, that's good.
Okay, and, and conduct.
Identical, okay.
Well, search, plan, conduct. If you need the word identify, put it in there, but.
Probably you want to wordsmith it, it's fine.
I think we know what the concept is, yeah. Well, we'll look at it.
Okay. Now, PR outreach, so we've talked about the brochure and the commission program signage, so, um, I would be interested in knowing what Commissioner Moore thinks about brochure. What would you want to do there?
I don't really know what to say because there's like sculptures that are in flux and things we don't know if they're, you know.
You say.
So I don't, I don't know what to do.
Can we move away from brochure and focus on the website? Cause then that could be a very dynamic brochure.
We don't, we don't have access to the website. We're not allowed to update it. It's the city.
There's, yeah, once the brochure's done, then we update the website from it, so.
How about if we save it for the brochure TBD, can we do that? Um, and then.
I mean, it would be really nice to have some sort of, um, you know, something to give to the public.
I completely agree.
You can have a subcommittee work out there.
These that are actually expired, but the artist hasn't called, the artist, so.
Yeah, it's nothing different.
We should, yeah, we should talk about that, but we can put TBD for this.
TBD for now.
And then we're on it, yeah.
Okay. Commission program signage, I would like to say Q one for that. So we have a public arts commission, you know, standee sign that is really beautiful, I think, um, but it, but we can, what I'm thinking we could do is we could update that in Q one.
Yeah, to call it park instead of art.
We should do it, if we want a table, table model and something.
And we can use it at the farmer's market.
The pull-up kind, right?
Exactly, yeah. Um, park representation at city community farmer's market, um, uh, how would you say anticipated completion? Wouldn't that be kind of ongoing?
Yeah.
Annually?
Yeah.
I think for all three of those, it's annually.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Annually? So we only do a farmer's market once in concert one?
Yes, one, one year at a time.
Table can give us.
Um, can, can I also, um, in addition to the commission program signage, um, I think it would behoove us if we were, especially for things done at park settings, whether it's a pop-up or family fun day table, um, that we maybe just have some really simple vertical flags that have our logo on it. Uh, and then that would draw people in from far away because of the visual is really big, but then when they get closer, they see the more detailed pop-up sign, roll-up sign that describes our program.
I think that's fine. And what do you think about, like, when, uh, at the next meeting, I could bring in the signage and you can see what it looks like and then we can decide. And that may be sufficient, cause that's.
Yeah, that's where I'm, and here to grab people's attention, right?
Yeah.
So that they're kind of fluttering and, you know, those.
I mean, could you bring those in next time?
I don't know. Do you have any?
We have them in Rotary and we use them to, so when we have a pop-up somewhere or we conduct a service activity that's out in outdoors, we use these vertical flags. You've seen them. They don't have to be that big. They could be six feet tall, they could be ten feet tall. They don't have to be that big. And they're, they're flags and they're pretty stiff, although there is movement. But you use them to draw people, like, you know, activity over here or come visit Rotary over here, um, and then.
I have that for.
And then as they get closer, then you get more detailed signs.
So when that's on the agenda, we can talk about that and the standee thing, and so we can say Q one.
Yeah, Q one.
Okay. Park representation, we, we advanced that, if, uh, we already covered that. Okay, so the next item is walking and bike tour of business district sculptures. Flyer promotion, I think that's TBD because we need a, we need the brochure. Call for public art, Commissioner Vice Chair, what do you think about that?
So that's sculptures and, um, we did it twice a year last time, so I think we've probably got to do it Q two and Q four, right? Yeah.
Uh, there's only one, uh, bit of feedback I want to put in that we have some blank spaces where sculptures have been moved.
I'm sorry.
We want to jump on that now. So if we wait for quarter two, I think we have a little blank platform in.
It's going to be hard to hear you, I'm really sorry.
Oh, that's okay. We have a blank cement stand over at Heritage Oaks Park. If we wait to quarter two, we're going to have that little blank stand with a cone on top of it all the way until then.
Okay.
Could we do it sooner?
What do you think?
Q one, Q three?
Yeah.
Q one, Q three.
Q one, Q three is fine with me.
Okay. I see Q two and Q four, Q four is like a dead quarter. So.
That's, staff does most of that work, that's why I was trying to alleviate.
Yeah, and that, that was, that was going to be my feedback. It's, it's probably not going to get done in Q one.
Okay, well, that's why I said.
If we start in Q one and finish it in Q two, that's probably the realistic plan.
Q one to Q two.
Especially with the weather.
But we could discuss it as a commission so we know what we're doing with call for art for, is that right?
Easy, it's.
And the commission, yeah, the commission.
Well, it's easy for people who've done it. So we need to know.
I mean, it's more, they have to send it out.
Yeah, and that's fine, but we need to know what our target is.
That's the topic, too.
Yeah.
Um, placing art within a reasonable distance to the public, art near me, what do you think? I, I, the reason I'm asking Vice Chair, cause she's done this.
Well. We've already identified the few places that still need art.
Okay.
And, um.
Is there like a document that describes art near me?
Well, it's not such a do, it's a spreadsheet that we have where we've identified places that we haven't put anything yet. Um, so I, I could say we could try to do that Q one. It, it, maybe next, maybe next meeting, we can bring in the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah. Jenna, you saw that spreadsheet?
I've got it, I think I've got it.
You've got the spreadsheet.
I want that different from the item right above it.
I was just going to ask that.
Well, that was a walk.
What's the difference between the one above it?
It's the same thing, basically, but, but it's, but, but it's the place, so art, art with all walls is we're calling for the artists to submit, um, their sculptures. And then we take all those, um, suggestions and then we try to put the art in places that still need sculptures.
In there, yeah. Okay, right, okay.
Are we ready to move on? Did you get?
Yeah.
You got that, okay. Um, work with staff to enter website, either.
So that's going to be Q two.
That's going to be Q three.
Three, okay, Q three.
Um, the city is working on a new website right now.
Oh, okay.
At least, at least six months until.
Okay, Q three.
I don't even know, it might be Q four, but Q three, I think is.
By Q three, we should know what our new artwork is.
Will there be a possibility of making one quick update to add Commissioner Young to the website?
Uh, he is.
Well, yeah, okay, great. Oh, wow, okay, that was awesome. Okay.
So the new website, to tell you, the new website's going to be very simplified with the city, um, so it'll just be links to whatever we want to do. So once that's all set up, the commission will work together to try and figure out what's that link going to look like.
Work with staff to manage and monitor current values, that's, that's a spreadsheet, I think Director Hernandez and I talked about that. I think so.
Ongoing.
Is, um, I can get going on that, but would, would you say Q one or would you want to say Q two on that?
I'll do two.
Okay, Q two, alright.
Is this like an, an ad hoc subcommittee would work on this?
No, that's just, that's a staff thing, yeah, it's a staff.
Staff thing? What do we do? What is our work?
Call for art and.
Well, well, once again, we can go through the assignments at a later meeting because I think everybody probably needs to figure out, can I get it done in Q two? Can I get, you know, so we'll, we'll, we can figure it out.
We're almost done with the explore restoration possibilities, aren't we?
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
So I would, I would say.
Well, no, we didn't finish the block that was above that, if you don't mind. The placement of sculptures, we won't, we need sculptures first to play.
Yeah.
So that's, if we're going to do a call for art.
Yeah, no, but this is, this is what, I think this what, what this refers to is the art spreadsheet that we use to manage it and to like, keep track of everything.
So we're not limited.
So we have that, right?
But we have it.
It's, it's outdated.
It's outdated because some parts are already gone.
So this is ongoing work?
Yeah, it's ongoing.
Okay.
Well, the ultimate, it'll be ongoing, but the ultimate, uh, update needs to be done by Q two, is what we have. All, all four of those bullets.
Okay. Exactly.
And the core restoration possibilities, um, that.
Done there, yeah.
We, we can do an update on that in a second. Um, Q two?
Q two.
Director Hernandez, is that okay, Q?
That's fine, I think, uh, we've hit the two main ones, we just need to update the system.
Yeah.
And start working on the next.
And that's, and that's, I thi- I think that this is all kind of wrapped together, catalog all art, public space, that goes on the same spreadsheet you did.
I would say, uh, can I say Q three? Because I think right now we've extended our budget on the restoration, uh, funds that we have. So that'll be in the next fiscal year, that you'll get budgeted money, and which is Q three.
Okay. When do we, who does the catalog, the art and public spaces? Do we do that? Do we walk around and?
We've got a, we need, we already have a spreadsheet on that. So we just have to update it with the sculptures that are gone and the ones that are there.
Yeah, we have the new sculptures that came in and some that were.
And is that the same with the restoration decision?
No, there was only one, two, three, four, five that were, needed to be restored.
Cause there was one, um, Ramp Road and three months that is filthy, disgusting, and that's work, and I don't know.
Well, filthy is different than restoration, filthy is.
I don't know. Who decides that? That's my question. When you see a sculpture that we, um, who decides what gets done with it?
First of all, someone tells us about it and then we have it looked at. And if staff says they can't clean it, then we have the people come out and look at it.
Okay, you're saying we, and I need to understand, is we us?
Yes.
The mission? So it'd be nice if we'd have a discussion about that and maybe each commissioner goes and looks at the sculpture, but this one is in bad, it needs work. See my opinion.
Yeah, no, are we already?
Yeah. Two years ago, we all, in, inventoried all of them, so if there's a new sculpture that needs work, we haven't done it.
Okay, so I think that needed to be done.
Forever, just to get approval for what we did, so.
Right. We want to spend money.
Yeah.
Why, why is that?
So you found somebody.
Okay.
Our self-fund, does restoration work?
The, 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 the work that needed to be done was over a certain amount, so we had to get it approved.
From, do you know from what city fund?
We used to have art fees, but we no longer have those. The one percent has gone away.
You're talking about art and Lufes?
Yeah.
With development?
Yeah.
But we have a fund, right?
Yeah, I guess we do.
We can have a, it's a.
That's what comes up, that's what comes up.
Maybe.
That's, that's a budget process, and I can explain that when we talk about the budget process, but this commission will be deciding what they're going to do hopefully by Q two, so we can finish that project by Q three and have the funding to clean, to purchase, to whatever we're doing that year. This last, this recent year, we've had a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And seventy of it already went out to the restoration of those two sculptures, so that's, that's where the money comes from.
Okay, so I think we'll be on to. Um, community center, community center art gallery, just finished a call for art, um.
We just put it up, so I would say Q two and Q four, okay?
Q two.
I had mentioned maybe doing it three times a year, is that not possible?
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay, I think the, I think it, it's not a lot of work putting it up. What is a lot of work is getting all the, ge- getting everybody to know that there is art, an art request, then having the public get them all in here, having the staff make sure that they've done it all right, and if they haven't, then the staff has to call everybody and say, hey, you didn't.
I understand, I understand the process, I've gone through it twice now, thank you, I get it.
I, I.
I just want to see it more. I have a question. Um, is that, is that work that staff has to do, there's no way you can offload any of that work to us? Given that you guys are so pinched for bandwidth?
Yeah, it's going to take you the same amount of time, I was going to say, what's going on. And yeah, you could, I could discuss offloading it because it's just that it's an outside website that, that deals with it at the cafe, yeah. If you're, want to be trained, there's, there's two issues with that though. There's one, we're relying on volunteers, and I'm not pointing the finger at any in particular here, but sometimes there's turnover. Sometimes, and, oh, who was in charge of that? I mean, we see it all the time with just our lists of, of art. but sometimes there's turnover, sometimes, and oh, who was in charge of that? I mean, we see it all the time with just our lists of, of art. Um, so, well, who's gonna pick up that ball? And that's something that does need to be changed out, so. Uh, that's, that's, those are the issues that I see with that. And the other thing is, the second issue I would say is, it's gonna take you the same amount of time.
Oh, I imagine so. It's just.
Just because we are limited on time doesn't mean that that process goes faster. We have to open it for a certain amount of time to get all those in. Then they have to deliver all of them once I take it to a commission meeting. So it's, it's a two and a half month process.
Yeah, and you, do you want to stand here every single day waiting for all the art to come in? I mean, you can, but.
It's easy all the time anyway, so.
Yeah, okay, well.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll consider, uh, handing it over if that's, if that's what the commission decides.
You know, it's just.
If the commission wants to do that, that'd be great.
I think the art, really art commission came to the conclusion, we wanted, I wanted to do it every quarter, so, when I first joined, and then we realized it's just not feasible.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Okay, so I think we have those dates. Art for council chamber in three steps. Director Hernandez, what do you want to say?
Q two.
Q two?
I think what's the, anticipated completion, I would say Q three probably, if we're talking about completion.
Yeah, the community input part, we, we're responsible for that.
What?
The community input part. When, when are we gonna do that?
Yeah.
I, I would like to put something concrete in maybe even Q one. You know, here we are talking about putting a package in front of council and we haven't really outreach to the community.
I think though, I think the way I want to use deadlines is that I think we don't want to commit to an earlier deadline and miss it, but if we give ourselves flexibility, Q three, we're all gonna be meeting every month and talking about it. So, and with a goal that we want to get stuff done sooner rather than later. I mean, I don't know, Director Hernandez, what you think about that? That works, okay. Um, okay, so work with staff on art-related events and recreation, recreation-related events, that's ongoing. I'm pretty sure anyone disagrees. Compile report with observations so we're done by. That looks like an old one.
Yeah, it's access use of current dog parks. Maybe I didn't crop it up again.
We never did it for the, uh, McKinsey, but I'm fine with dropping it.
Okay, we'll drop it.
If it, I mean, it's supposed to be a pilot, though, so technically we've not done what we said we were going to do.
McKinsey from the commission.
I think we do.
I mean, the review is done and done, but the McKinsey, we should at least come up with some short assessment. Do some community outreach in area.
Or at least put it on the agenda again because we know, it was supposed to be a pilot and it's never officially been closed as a pilot. So I think for residents, that'd be the right thing to do. They can come to the meeting if they want and say what they want about it.
I think we should.
Is that, is that to be on a meeting and put a sign at the park that says we're gonna have a meeting? Okay.
We could even do a workshop. If we're getting exclusion space as opposed to deadline space. Let's talk about deadlines.
We'll take that out, we'll re, we'll add it to when we decide how we're gonna do it, yeah.
I would just make it more specific, say, uh, instead of assess use of current dog parks, just say, um, you know.
Finalize McKinsey.
Finalize, or you could put it under the, uh, what's it, what you need to carry on the, the projects. Under the project would be, um, finalize report for McKinsey dog park pilot. That's simple. And put it out in what, like Q two or something?
Sure.
I mean, we're pushing everything to Q three. Maybe one thing we could do in Q two. It wouldn't take very much.
No, we've got the information.
So what is it again? What are you saying?
Um, and under assess use of current dog parks, leave that as is, but then in the next column, say, um.
Finalize McKinsey.
Sorry?
Finalize McKinsey.
Yeah, co- complete report on, on the McKinsey dog park pilots. And we'll do that in Q two. And just to be absolutely sure, Q one is January, February, March, July, calendar?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Because every other organization's work floor is.
Yeah, they can bistle.
Bistle, yeah.
Okay, um, I think. I think in F, one, two, three, four, five are all ongoing, yeah.
What do you guys think, though, about, I mean, the DEI, increased parking facility use? Enga-, you know, actually putting a hardcore objective down, like engage some community group of our choice um, and do a cultural event, you know.
I think that kind of is our culture already. Cultural is the next one.
I don't want to pick a culture because I certainly don't want to be accused of not loving every culture.
No, 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 we, if we establish this pattern of doing one per year, we'll get, we'll get to everybody. We have to, we have to state it as a program, not as a one-off. Where, where, I'm sorry, who's, uh, Chair Corrigan? Multicultural?
I mean, and also, I mean, I'm looking at.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Increased participation in recreation. We have it under programmatic event. Okay, all right.
Okay, cool. All right, so I think you're done with your work plan, unless anyone else has any comments, questions?
So wait, so one more little page, would you leave in terms of the, the, um, would we, we can try to plan at least one cultural event next year?
I mean, last year, we didn't have any trouble getting a lot of cultural events brought to us by.
Yeah, we had, uh, the, here, we had, uh, the.
Yeah, but those are, those are community initiated. I mean, we, we didn't have any standing in any of those activities.
I was at Elm's every single one of them.
As an individual, right? Not as a representative of park.
Well, they all knew I was at Clark.
Well, we couldn't talk like that, right? We couldn't speak that way. I'm, I'm.
So I never do that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Valdez, are you saying that you want to plan something that hasn't been planned organically from this commission? Or?
Well, in collaboration with community groups, we're, we're.
Yeah, I mean.
But, but yes. Something that proactively we are trying to organize and sponsor rather.
Who are you gonna pick the first group? I would not be wanting to do that. Sorry. Because then we're gonna be accused of picking one group opposed to another group.
Not if you.
Maybe we can state a program.
Because I have an idea.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good, uh, topic for an agenda. I don't know. So why don't we just, because it's a, the, the task at hand is just, it's gonna be ongoing.
There's one more little page in case you.
All ongoing.
Sponsorship, yeah, ongoing and public process is ongoing.
Okay, sorry, I don't know.
Okay, so, um, and back to art. Informational items.
There's one more thing about our work plan. I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered.
Oh, we're not done yet. All right.
Okay, so when we're talking about quarters, our third quarter and our fourth quarter are only two months each. The first two quarters are three months because we don't meet in July. The third quarter is only two months because we don't meet in December. The fourth quarter is only two months. Just so that when we're thinking about.
Okay.
Still work.
Talking about meetings, you could still finish the project.
We can still work.
I was just telling you, you can still finish the project even though you're not meeting.
All I'm doing is pointing something out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't you say someone that's, no December meeting?
That's what she was pointing out. There's no December, no July.
Do you want to say anything about the joint meeting in February?
No, there's nothing.
Okay.
There's. Hang on, hang on, just a second. We need to go back to that item. Did not have, I need a motion to.
We need a motion to approve it. Okay.
I'm going to approve our work plan that we've, um, amended today.
Um, Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Purtur?
Thank you, yes.
Chair Corrigan?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Young? And Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. And really, um, oral reports are requested for future agendas. Oral reports, um, Director Hernandez, did you want to talk about this?
This is the two that I told you to check on.
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead.
So, um, so part of our restoration work at Lincoln Park has been completed. I took pictures of it today. Um, they're gonna go around. It's beautiful. Imagine that. It's like it's been completely refurbished. It's, um, sorry, I didn't print a lot of copies because it's like a lot of ink. Awesome. But you can tell by close up about how shiny it is and it was dirty. And I, I'm thinking the sculpture that you were talking about, Commissioner Morris, we should talk about and get it on the list.
Yes, we should.
To get it cleaned and looked at or whatever.
That's a high-end area in our town.
Yeah. Because the.
We've gone out and washed a number of them. Yeah. Not last year.
It was the year before, because I walked out to some of those, yeah, and made sure that they were washed in the right way. Uh, yeah, and so.
That couldn't be washed.
So that was washed and recreated, yeah.
They take it, they take it away. They take it down and take, take it to their shop.
So, uh, yeah, staff can do a certain amount of cleaning, uh, statues as long as we own them. Uh, if it's not something we own, we don't touch them.
Yeah, exactly.
But, uh, and then we, we'll, we'll ask a recommendation too if it's a little bit further, like something like that. A washing, this was deteriorating.
Oh, it's bad.
Fix it up and everything. I'm power washing wood doing it.
Any other reports? Yes, really?
Okay. So, okay. Family Fun Day is coming up December fourteenth. And I'm sure there can always be more volunteers.
What is that? When is it?
December fourteenth.
Family Fun Day, yeah.
So it's where, um, the community center is open to families and others. And basically this room has activities in it and there's a movie going and the room across from us has activities. And then the library comes in and does an activity. There's games outside. Sometimes there's another organ, oh, there's, last time there was this amazing shade painter here. So there's all sorts of things and there's a theme for each one of them. And usually they're, like in this room, there might be four or five activities that, uh, you know, the child or even adults, we have this couple that comes every time now. But they can pick it up and do one of each of them and same in that room. And last year for the holiday one, they did globes with paint inside. It, you know, so the staff does a fantastic job, but they can always use more hands. So. And I don't know. We can talk about volunteering when we talk about our work plan. I think we need to do some. More.
December fourteenth, ten to one.
Thank you. Yeah. And usually volunteers are nine to two. And they have the whole year planned out.
Yeah.
So December fourteenth, February twenty-second, April fifth, June twenty-first. And an email now calling for volunteers from Bridget for a number of events that are coming up. I don't know if anybody thought, but, well, maybe we need to.
We signed it again since it went out.
Well, maybe a month.
I'll still get it to the commission.
Thank you for that. Um, okay, future agenda items. I wanted to propose the signage. One, or maybe we could talk about in December, if that's okay with you guys?
January?
Um, pardon?
We don't have one in December.
January.
January.
Okay, yes, thank you. Someone just pointed it out. Okay, great. Any other?
Brochure. I'd like to talk about the brochure. Somehow we can get our brochure. Yeah. And then also the art and like cleaning of, but it's specifically that sculpture at Fremont and Grant.
Okay.
One brochure is contingent on like confirmation about the sculptures.
Yeah.
So, because it's costly to produce them and so I want to make sure, because we have to pay the artists to, to change the format and everything, so I want to make sure we know which sculptures are staying, which ones are being installed. So, right?
So you know, discussion about the brochure, that's what I mean. Those components that need to be done.
We should, we should actually word it maybe like confirm art pieces.
Right.
To go into brochure.
How we can get the brochure.
Talk about the status of the spreadsheet.
Um, question on that. It, it, once you print a brochure, assuming all the elements that you need are there. Have it professionally printed. How long is a typical lifetime of a brochure, given that we're doing calls for art?
That's what needs to go on the agenda.
A year?
Yeah. We did that.
And pretty much go around, like, like that, that, um, vortex was sold, you know, I mean, that was so. It's, it's kind of arbitrary.
I'm just wondering, I mean, again, climate action, all that kind of thing. I'm just wondering.
We try to print for the need. So like, we would print in Banff, like the farmer's market and kind of anticipate how many we would need. We wouldn't like just print a bunch and have reserves.
Okay.
And that's not really what's costing. It's more like the, the artist's fee, you know.
Did we ever talk about, um, the, the garden thing as far as when we should, we should bring it back to talk? Because you may talk about budget.
Talking about future agenda. Um, no, that, that's something I, I think the next step that we were gonna do is I was gonna add that to the budget. That's what we talked about.
So then.
It's not coming back to the permission for a while.
Bring it back here to talk about it.
Budgets not the weapon.
Well, getting it into the budget probably March, April, um, and then approval of the budgets in June.
Oh, from far away.
Yeah, because once again, I, as, as I think we talked about at that meeting, um, that, that whole process is, even if we put it on today and said, you have this much money and a project ready to go, we don't have the bandwidth staff-wise to actually do that project. We have other priorities right now. So putting it on the budget, this, this isn't something that we would start working on till next fiscal year at the earliest. So, yeah, we'll, we'll agendaize it when it comes up, though.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Do you want to say this?
It's a minute, it's a second.
You can hear it if you want.